Mayor Pandalion?
Here.
Alderman Morris?
Here.
Alderman Notet?
Here.
Alderman Rommel?
Here.
Alderman Notes?
Here.
Alderman Preschlach?
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome, everybody. First thing on the agenda is reports of city officers. First city officer is me. And I just wanted to mention a couple of events that have happened over the last couple of weeks. You may recall that we had been working on trying to get some legislation changed or the statutes changed with respect to notification of people that speak in public comment at our council meetings. There have been now two lawsuits where the public speakers have actually been named as defendants in a lawsuit, which is, I think, an unintended consequence of the way the law was written. I've been working closely with Julie Morrison, along with the city attorney, to get that language changed, and I think we're making progress. I know the legislature is in session, and Senator Morrison is working on it. We've been exchanging language back and forth so that they get it right, and hopefully she'll be able to get it corrected soon, shortly. So that's a bit of good news. And then, secondly, another bit of good news. We found out, oh, probably in early January, that Metro has gone ahead and started work on the universal crossover switch at the West Side train station, which was part of a 2019 study that was done to improve our reverse commute schedules because there was a huge gap in the schedule in the late afternoon. It was causing disruption in Conway Park among the office users, and it also didn't provide very good service for our residents to get into the city in the afternoon and back out again. So the pilot was very successful. It had to be truncated, but they had more ridership in one year than they were expecting to get for the two-year pilot. So they kind of shut the pilot down for COVID, but the data was there. And so, and now, the nice thing is, excuse me, we're not being asked to pay for it, even though we had allocated $400,000 of city funds to be, to support that. So, and it's been very well supported by our local legislators up and down the line. I have a letter here that I'd like to read that was cosigned by myself, Senator Morrison, Representative Bob Morgan, Kevin Konsedine, who's the president and CEO of Lake County Partners, and Paris Parek, our local Lake County board member. "After the success of the Metro Moore Pilot Project that improved access for those making the reverse commute from the city of Chicago to work in the northern suburbs and for area residents traveling to Chicago, Metro has begun infrastructure work in the city of Lake Forest that will make possible the long-term operation of an enhanced reverse commute schedule. The work includes the installation of a crossover and other improvements for reliability and assurance of on-time performance. This project is being funded by Metro on tracks that they own. It comes as a result of a partnership between Metro, Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital, ABV, Horizon Therapeutics, Trustmark Insurance, Tenneco, the Conway Park Owners Association, Lake County Partners, Lake County Government, City of Lake Forest, and the Village of Deerfield to fund the successful pilot project that quantified the ridership impacts of the enhanced reverse commute schedule. This study, and now the implementation, received no support from Canadian Pacific and is unrelated to any past discussions about adding a third freight track. A long-term reverse commute schedule will support business in Lake Forest, provide broader access to the best talent in the workforce, and improve area residents' service to and from Chicago. As has been previously expressed to the Illinois Department of Transportation and the Federal Surface Transportation Board, we maintain our strong opposition to any plan that would increase freight traffic and/or add tracks on railways within the city of Lake Forest. We thank the local partnership and Metro for funding this effort to provide commuter rail transportation to our residents and businesses." So, that solves a problem that we've been dealing with forever. And so, work should be completed later, late this year, I think, was the target. They're working on it now, but it's quite a bit of signal work and so forth that has to be done. So, so that's, that's all good news. And I appreciate all the community involvement we've had and all the partnerships that we've worked through to get this done. The next thing is, I have some board and commission appointments and reappointments that we'll need to have a voice vote on. Gerard Tuie Jr., appointed to the Board of Trustees Fire Pension Fund from Ward III. No watching videos during the meeting.
TikTok.
Anyway, Historic Preservation Commission, Leif Soderberg, appointed from Ward I. And the Legal Committee making joy Gus Scott Mueller's appointment to permanent chair from interim chair from Ward III. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. That concludes my comments. The next thing on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. Good evening. I have one item under my community spotlight tonight, and that is the opportunity to introduce Dr. Matthew Montgomery, the superintendent of schools for District 67 and 115. Many of you may know Matt's been on board for almost two years now. And aside from some of the topics he's going to discuss tonight, I just want to take the opportunity to note what a tremendous partner he's been with the city. I think he's doing a wonderful job at the schools, and again, has been very open to collaborating with the city on a myriad of different issues. And while our units of government operate independently, our successes are so closely intertwined that it's just been wonderful to have a partner like him in the role. And with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Dr. Montgomery, who's here to provide an update on District 115 facilities bond referendum.
Thank you, Jason, and thank you for allowing me to have a few minutes with you today. As I am a superintendent and tend to run my mouth too much, I'm going to start a timer just to keep track of myself, and I will try to use the best use of this time together and give you time at the end for questions. I just want to reiterate the partnership with Jason over these last two years has been paramount, as well as George, and I can't tell you how much it means to me to have a community that partners and values schools as much as we value the city, and I think that that's a symbiotic relationship that I'm most grateful for as a Lake Forest resident, as well as the superintendent of both 67 and 115. Am I speaking loud? Do I need to get closer, Margaret?
Is the light, is your light on?
Seems like...
If you just go closer, you're going to...
Yes, ma'am. I've never been told that I'm not loud enough, so. I want to tell my mother tonight, actually. I'm very excited. So, very quickly, I'm going to go through a little bit about the school, why we need a referendum, a summary of what it entails, talk about benefits, financial implications, and then I'll finish with your questions, and hopefully in 10 minutes or less. So, last year, we were awarded, for the first time in school history, a national blue ribbon. We're exceptionally proud of that. I cannot take credit for it. It's my predecessor and their team. So Shayla Holland, as well as Mike Simic, and the teaching staff and students deserve recognition for that award, but we're so excited that we can celebrate it. And as I turn to the next slide, you will see some key factors or demographics about the school. So just to highlight a few of them, we are in the top 20 districts or high school districts in the state. We are AAA bonded. We have over 90% of our students who are taking AP courses getting a three or greater. We have a graduation rate of 98%, and so much more. And as a parent of an incoming freshman, if you look at the right, the bottom two right squares, so there's 33 athletic opportunities, there's 68 extracurricular offerings. To be able to be a parent in a district that has these many opportunities for kids is incredible, and I couldn't be prouder to serve in this role, both as a dad and as a superintendent. When I talk about the referendum, I am here to just share facts. So I am not here to tell you how to vote. It's not my business to do so, and it's well beyond the role that I serve in. So this is merely an educational opportunity for me to answer any questions you may have around the upcoming referendum. If I were to boil down the why into two key areas, the first one is to protect our historic entity. So there's an 88-year-old building that we want to remain open for many years in the future, and we need to protect that investment. The second component is that we need to finish what we started in 2006. So in 2006, there was a referendum that touched half of the classrooms within that building. This referendum allows us to finish that work for kids, and we are able to touch every classroom that was not impacted in 2006, as well as key infrastructure that will ensure that the building is open for another 20-plus years or more. How much are we asking for and for what? We bucketed into two different buckets. It could be labeled as a complete infrastructure referendum, but we separated it for clarity and said that 52% is for the infrastructure improvements that you might not see. So you're not going to see electrical panels if you're walking through the hallways. You're not going to see plumbing. You're not going to see the HVAC machines. But those are integral to keeping that building open. And 48% of the ask is on instructional space upgrades. I would argue those are classroom infrastructures. So how are we transforming the classrooms that were not touched in 2006 to meet the needs of our students? And it breaks down to $105.7 million for the whole project. This has been an iterative process well before my tenure, and I will tell you that the project numbers under my tenure moved from a $200-million ask to 160, to 140, and we boiled down to the $105.7 million. Know that this plan is not baked with frill or fluff. This is what we need right now to make sure the building is open. And I think that's important for you to know as council members, that we did not build this plan anticipating that we would be taking multiple bites at the apple. This is the plan, and this is what we need. And we did not put other things that some people would say would be extra. So an example would be the RMA or the auditorium in that building. We did a study, and we just received the report in the fall. It needs $20 million for that section of the building. I pulled that with the team from the project because I did not believe that that was an absolute need that we would want to go to the taxpayers for. Could we do a capital fundraising campaign on that? Sure. But there, another example would be the naditorium or the pool. Those are areas that are not touched in this $105.7. We didn't bake them in anticipating that if it went down, or does go down in April, that I would come back to you at the next election cycle with a scaled-back version. I think people would want to know that. Key benefits of the plan. So I bucketed them into maintenance and infrastructure, safety and security, ADA accessibility, student support spaces and labs, classroom and technology. Know that if you have a student in Lake Bluff or in DPM, and I'm just going to look at the science labs alone, you essentially go back in time when you walk into the high school. So the classrooms and the supports that we are offering our middle school students in these communities are far greater than that of which we were able to support in the high school environment due to the age of the building. So this modernization is ensuring that those key skills that they're learning in those environments at DPM or Lake Bluff or area private schools continues to build as they move through LFHS for those four years through graduation. ADA is something I'm just going to highlight in that there's, while the building is in code, there are things that could greatly improve the experience for our students and our staff with accessibility needs. And I'm very proud that these elements will be improved upon with this referendum. Safety and security is a hot topic right now. So when you look at the fire protection system or rapid lockdown systems in terms of if we had an intruder, these are things coupled with door sensors at exterior doors that would improve the level of safety and security that we're able to offer our students in an ever-changing world where unfortunately, we have to run a great deal of drills that maybe we didn't have to do 20 years ago because of the climate that we are living in. When I look at financial implications, we broke it down to $500,000 increments. We also put $1 million. I'm getting mixed feedback on what I should have said and what I shouldn't say. Here's both ways. And on the website, you'll be able to see if there's a QR card or code on the presentation deck. But it's approximately $40 per month per $500,000 of home value. I know at the Chambers breakfast last week, the average sale price right now was quoted for $1.3 million. I know that's fluctuating. The market right now is atrophy in terms of availability, which is good if you want to sell your house. Some of us are getting flyers in the mailboxes that say, "Please sell. We'll do it right now for you." But know that on a million-dollar house, it's $79 per month, or about $950 per year. Before I go to your questions, and I'm at eight minutes right now, I want to invite the community to a Let's Talk series specifically on the referendum that's going to be held this Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the high school. We started these Let's Talk series on hot-topic issues because during the pandemic, we were seeing this influx of emotions at the podium of board meetings. And we wanted to create a release valve where we could have candid dialogues and answer questions about hot-topic issues in the community. This is the next series. There was one last week. We did a Let's Talk on student support. This one's specifically on the referendum. They'll be building tours that are ahead of this presentation if the community would like to visit or get questions asked. At this time, I will pause my rambling at nine minutes and five seconds and entertain any questions you may have. This doesn't go against my time, just so you know. I stopped at nine minutes. George, nine minutes and five seconds.
Well done.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Appreciate your service to the community and your leadership on this. I just had, I have three questions for you. So we know our finances of the city operations pretty well, but I have to say, I do not even know the operating budget for our schools and our capital expenses. You know, I have not looked at a budget. We get a lot of budget work here that keeps us occupied. So I was kind of curious what the operating budget is for the high school and the capex on an annual basis, how that's kind of trended, just to get a perspective on this. And then, the second question. In our city, we have done a lot of public-private partnerships with individuals, and I'm just kind of curious if you have talked to, you know, Abbott or ABV or any other corporate partners in the market to help finance some of this, and if those conversations have happened. And then the third question is, if this doesn't go through, what happens?
Okay, so I didn't bring notes, but I'm going to check my memory. Okay.
Yeah.
So first question. Average operating cost is about $55 to $60 million per year. Between both districts, $120 million. So it fluctuates back and forth, but let's call it 55. We are investing, the previous, we invested $1 to $1.5 million in capital improvements over the last 10 to 15 years. So if it's 10 years, you're looking, we invested $10 to $15 million. We also, last year, did a short-term borrow of $15 million. So essentially, we took a home equity of sorts because we wanted to make sure that we had skin in the game and we didn't lose time while we were revamping the referendum talk. So when I was hired, they said, "We want you to explore a referendum." It got pushed on pause, May of, or March of 2020. "We want to see where you think we are." So we did the short-term borrow last year to make sure we could invest $5 million over the next three summers to keep work going and make sure that we, at all costs, avoid emergency repairs while we were figuring out what we were doing with the referendum. Second question was public-private partnerships. How I have been answering that question is, I would look at public and private partnerships for the above and beyond. So the naditorium, the auditorium, any type of athletic improvements. I've been doing the roadshow, so to speak, and I did this work in my previous district where we had a bond or a referendum of X, and the community had special interests above and beyond the, what I call, what we needed, and it was more of what we wanted. We got a capital fundraising firm that worked with the district. I partnered with them, and we raised additional $1.2 million to build another gymnasium on a high school because that was something that the community was interested in. I would very much be in favor of doing those special interest projects and partnering public and private, whether it be a business or an individual donor. But that would be post-passing of the referendum, so we could see what is above and beyond. Third question. I need help for you remembering.
So if this doesn't pass, what happens? So what's the impact and the severity of the issues that are being addressed? And, you know, could some of them be met or not? And I'm just kind of curious.
It's the question that I like answering the least. So I am glad that you asked it, though, because it's an important question. What I want to avoid in this response is, there is no intent to threaten. Some, and the reason it makes me uncomfortable is, some districts across the country will build a plan and put it in front of the taxpayers and then say, "If you don't support us, these are all the horrible things we're going to do to you." We are not doing that. It's against my moral compass, and it's not what the board or the administration has interest in doing. And this is a very sophisticated tax base, and I think they would call me out on that pretty quickly. But there's two options that have not been determined. One is, we put it up again. But know that we wouldn't put it up again for less. So this is the plan. This is what the building needs. And the next time is the most opportune would be the presidential election, which is November of '24. There is an 8% escalation cost built in right now per year. So if I wait two years to put it up in November '24, your $105.7 million project turns into $120 and some change for no more. We didn't get any more for our dollars. It just cost more because we waited two years. We also run the risk that any emergency fixes in that two years while we're waiting to see if the community would support it, I'm paying the collective, the board is paying 50% potentially or more on any emergency fixes, and we could run the risk of portions of the building going offline while those fixes are being repaired. We all want our furnaces to go out in the summer. That's just not how reality hits sometimes. So you run the risk of that happening in those years. The second option, which is just as viable, so there isn't a preference. We're going to have the conversation in March with the board, is to, if it is widely turned down, I think I would lean with, "Let's just pull out of the general fund and pay for this." And we would pay for the infrastructure solely, so that $55 million. We'd stretch it over, I'm going to say, 10 years. And this is all ballpark, right? So 10 years. And what we would do is, we would have to do short-term borrows and reduce programming and supports to be able to pay for that home equity or whatever out of general fund. So in the last 10 to 20 years, the boards have invested heavily in programs and support to ensure that we are able to provide the same level of programming and experiences that Stevenson and Nutrier can do with half or less kids. So if you send your kid to LFHS, you're one of 1,400, and you get the robust experience I talked about when I started the conversation. If you send your student to Nutrier, you're one of 4,000. So we have invested to ensure that the experiences and opportunities are the same. We would not be able to keep that same reality to some degree if I have to pull $55 million out of the operating budget over 10 years. I would try to minimize that impact. That's why I don't like to threaten. I would minimize it and impact kids as least as possible, but I can't tell you, if 80% of our budget is staff, it is likely that I'm going to be reducing staff, which means reducing programming and supports to be able to pay for those bills.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Thank you, doctor. Really appreciate you coming in front of us. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the public to become more aware of it. I have a couple of questions, like my colleague. First off, often when we have our AAA bond rating status and we look at borrowing money, number one, would a debt incursion of this size impact your ability to borrow in the future? Because keeping an eye on the fact that there are other projects that you do want to do, would that negatively impact that? Certainly seems like this is the most favorable environment right now in terms of the cost of money would be the first question. Second question, this is just a point of verification. When you talk about support and services and not wanting to take those away. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, almost a third of the students at the high school have some level of service requirements or IEPs, which they're entitled to under state law. So that's something that really, that's something that would be really hard for you to trim away from the budget. That's something that you're obliged, as a school district, to provide, correct?
So I can't confirm the one-third number you just said. But, so there's 504s and there's IEPs for students who need additional support. Those are federally mandated. So to your second question, we cannot reduce the level of services or the cost associated to offering special education supports under IDEA, which is the federal mandate around special education.
And borrowing capacity.
And then the borrowing capacity is a great question. So this, I would never want to handcuff future boards in any decision that we're making now. So our borrowing capacity is 205 million. So we could do essentially two referendums. We'd have to somehow pay for it, by the way, so I'm not encouraging that to happen under my tenure. It would not impact the borrowing capacity of future boards because of the magnitude of the borrowing capacity that we have. And we just got re, sorry, we just re, were reevaluated for the 15 million borrow for the AAA bonding, so that is a newer, like, within the last year, we got reaffirmed at AAA. Both districts are AAA.
And one last follow-up. This isn't your first rodeo, I understand. The district that you came from, you...
Yeah, so I age in, I feel like I'm aging in dog years. But my previous district, and I just finished a project where I must like, I must not like to be bored. I was the owner's rep and superintendent of an $86 million project. We built two buildings, brand new. We renovated the other two. We did a turf project, and we did a bus garage as well because we manned our own buses in Ohio. And that was for a K-12 institution. So this is not my first project. It makes me tired thinking about it, but also makes me awfully excited for what we'll be able to do for kids if it passes.
Thank you.
I have one question. How long is the bond issued for?
20 years. Great question.
So 20-year payoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That was the most succinct question to answer. I don't want to give gold stars, but if I were to give a gold star...
Try to keep it simple. Oh, I have one other question. Are there any other...
Taking back those kudos.
Are there any other bonds outstanding that we're still paying for?
Yeah, so there is one bond from 2006 that'll be paid off in three years. So the last three years of the 2006s.
And how much is that one? Do you know? How much is that per household?
It was $55 million. I think that it fluctuates. We just looked at this today. I'm looking at Melissa. It drops, I think, like $400 per a million-dollar house, 200 for 500,000.
And there's three more years on that.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Alderman Morris?
Good to see you again. What happens to the instructional environment while you're doing this project? Where do, where all the students go while you're...
So in 2006, they were largely building new space. So it was a more favorable jigsaw because they were building the commons area, and it wasn't, it's like when the accordion, somebody used this earlier as an example, so it's not my idea, but when the accordion unfolded out, then they could dump the kids in, and they didn't have to shift them around. Here, it's going to be largely summer work because of the impact on kids. We could, I will never support it, so I have to be overruled by a board, and I serve at the pleasure of boards, so this happens sometimes. We could put trailers on the front lawn. That is something that I can't get behind without being overruled. So we will have to be very calculated on how we're taking portions of the building over to minimize the impact on kids. I'm confident we could be creative, but it will be breaks, like winter break, spring break, summer breaks, and then trying to extend those summer breaks. So you may see an abbreviated calendar where we're trying to end the school year later and start it earlier, or grab weeks wherever we can.
And how long do you think the project will take?
I think it'll take three to four summers. Now know that we have summer work already planned because I don't like to waste time. Neither does the board. So we have, in last summer, we did 5 million of work. This summer, we have 5 million of work. Next summer, we have 5 million of work. So we are not wasting time on investments to make sure that the building is continued to improve. That is our, that's being paid out of the general fund. But what it does is, it gives us about 18 months or so to do design work, so we're not, the building isn't sitting idly, and we're running risk of more cataclysm. So we're not, the building isn't sitting idly and we're running risk of more cataclysmic failures in terms of infrastructure.
And one second question, for District 67, so change the subject a little bit, we have, what, 1,300 new families have moved into town, assuming with probably younger children? We'll see. What do you think the impact is on the elementary and the middle school from all the demographic changes that we're experiencing?
So the enrollment studies have not been impacted in terms of the 10-year outlook as of yet. I will tell you that last fall, we had the highest kindergarten class that we have ever had. However, the market, I think it's going to flatline. So the reason is because there isn't the availability of houses. So what I shared, what was shared at the Chambers House, there just isn't a market that's saturated for more people to move in. I think we saw the bump. We are not at the capacity that we were 10 years ago. So we have plenty of wiggle room. And since you talked about 67, which is my other favorite topic, know that we are not asking for any referendum in 67 in the foreseeable future. And when I say foreseeable, I'm talking ever in my tenure. So let's just say 10, 20 years out. We just, I just left a board meeting in for 67 and we talked about this very topic. So there is no plans to ask for a referendum in 67.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Alderman Weber.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Montgomery, for the information. It's been really great. I did use a QR code and the calculator during our time here, and it was very helpful to see what that cost is, you know, based on your home value.
So you weren't listening to me, is that what you were?
Yeah, I'm listening. Alderman Morris asked the question that I was thinking of, what potential growth do you see at the high school? So you've answered that already. And my second question then was, is related to the cost per student. Can you comment on what that is at roughly 1,400 students per year?
Yes, I think we're at $32,000 per student.
And how does that compare to other, other public schools in our vicinity?
It's very comparable in the North Shore. What we have, working for us and against us, is that our numerator is small. So our number will always be higher than some of our North Shore competitors, but not out of the realm of comparability. And it's, it's, it's seventh grade math. So Nutria's numerator is 4,000 students. That's their top number. Ours is 1,400. So when, however you shape that, there's no magic trick that I can do, nor should I do, that would minimize that we are going to have a higher per-student ratio because of our lower ADM or our lower enrollment.
Right, so.
I think that's a good thing, so I'm just going to say this out loud, because I think that we are able to offer services and support for students that you would not get from a human-human connection because you're one of 1,400 versus one of 4,000.
Sure. I mean, I'm the only one up, up here that has children, potentially future, participating in the high school. You know, many of you have already experienced that. So that's why I ask, is to kind of reiterate your comment earlier that you offer such a robust programming, both extracurricular and athletic, et cetera. So, thank you.
And there's, and I think one of the reasons that I got this, the opportunity to serve in these communities, is my belief in fiscal responsibility. So know that I took a deep dive in these last two years on both budgets. And we made some changes last year at 115 that impacted the budget for this year in that we balanced the budget in 115 last year. We reduced, there's, there's things going around that administration has increased. We are running the lowest amount of administrators that 115 has had in five years. So fiscal responsibility is something that's ingrained in me. I don't know if it's how I was brought up, it doesn't matter. Just know that I am looking at the budget from a fiscal lens and an opportunity lens and making sure that those two are in line with each other.
I think that's great, and I think this council certainly looks at that with the city and its operations here. Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Alderman Rummel.
Thank you very much. As a graduate of the high school myself, it's exciting to see the investment being made or proposed. Has Bond Council given any advice or in terms of where the market is right now about going to the market to issue these bonds and tenure and, and timing if this gets passed at the referendum this spring? Is there, are you looking to hit the market right away, wait and kind of see if timing might, again, it's a crystal ball and it's anyone's guess, but I'd be curious what guidance you've been getting.
So we work with Liz Hennessy, who works with a great deal of districts on the North Shore. She's from Raymond James. She is the best in the business, in my opinion. And she has not determined when we will go. It's really going to be her assessment of the market at that time to see what is in our best, best situation given the timeframe, because that market is fluctuating, as you know all too well. But it's under her guidance that we will make those decisions. And she has not told me one way or the other as of yet. She did build out all of the financials, all of the borrow, ran many scenarios, partnered with the board, was with them several occasions to try to figure out, you know, what type of note we were looking for, how we were distributing the interest to make sure that the board was in full support of the plan. But Liz Hennessy is her name.
Thank you.
So back in my school board days, which admittedly was a while ago, we would have called these like life safety bonds because it's so much infrastructure. Is that still a nomenclature that's used?
So we could. A portion of it is life safety, but I think that in the spirit of transparency, we are touching classrooms. So it, it's nuanced, it's not solely life safety. I would argue the bulk of it is life safety. And that's why I'm not labeling it that way. And that's why the graphic you're seeing is 52% infrastructure, 48% classrooms. It's still infrastructure, but it's not all solely life safety.
And so back.
That's a great point, actually.
Back to Alderman Weber's question. So what's the incremental increase in per pupil expenditure because of this bond? What do you estimate that to be?
Yeah, so it's, they're separate buckets. So the, the referendum monies can only be spent on the capital improvements. The money that's per pupil is coming out of general operating. So they, the two budgets don't intermingle, so the per pupil would increase by CPI adjustments year over year, accounting for PTEL. It would not be impacted by the 105.7 million dollars.
So there.
Yeah, you could, like if you just wanted to do quick math, we could figure out how much the 105.7 would be distributed over 1,400 students, and then I could add that to the money we're spending. But they're two different accounts and they're not intermingling. So some people have asked, does this money impact, like is this going to be a great raise for administrators and teachers? What's it going to do for the unions? Are they going to be very excited? They don't touch each other.
Well, so it's important to keep them separate also because we're compared to other districts by per pupil expenditure. So that was, you know, a little bit of my concern, that we, you know, want to be sure that they're kept separate so that we're not.
Never touch each other.
Looking out of proportion to our neighboring school districts.
Good point.
Another comment that I just want to make is I want, I've lived through a lot of these school expansions on a personal basis. I too am a Lake Forest High School graduate a few years before Ted. So the class after I graduated built the West Campus. My younger sister was the first one in there. And also when I was on the school board, there were projections of huge enrollment increases. And so we were going to have to potentially build another campus out at the end of Deer Path Road, basically where the Alloa campus is. You know, people who have some history remember that that Alloa campus was being reserved for elementary schools, if you recall. And that never happened either. So, so I congratulate you in not overreacting to this increase in new homes and new residents that are entering our community, because that goes up and down constantly with the economy, with the housing market. So I applaud you for taking a conservative approach to those future enrollment projections.
I've been beaten up in the past, any projection in enrollment over five years makes me awfully nervous.
Right.
So that's just lived experience.
Right. And I assume that you're still doing those surveys of nursery schools? That's what we used to do anyway, and kind of.
When we do enrollment, sorry.
Yeah, be able to gauge what the incoming kindergarten classes are, which was always very helpful in terms of classrooms and, and all of that. So.
Families, and what I was going to add is when families enroll, we ask them, do you, like how many preschool students do you have to try to get an idea of incoming enrollment in the shorter term?
Right. And then the other question that I'm asking, because I have been asked that question in the community, is why is this all hitting at once? Why weren't some of these projects undertaken before? Gradually? You know, you just said the 67 schools probably won't need any major improvements. I don't think you're ready to say for your lifetime, but, you know, maybe for.
Not for my lifetime.
For a number of years. So I assume that's because we've taken care of a lot of those issues as they came up. So why, why is this different?
So that's a complex answer. I'm going to do my best to answer it with fidelity. The first thing that 67 has going for it is that they have a DECEB. So they have a debt service extension borrow. And that was put in place in the middle to late 90s. And it was created, it was essentially a home equity loan of sorts that school districts were afforded, that was based off of existing debt that they had on the duplicate. So at that time, 67 had a debt, low debt, but it was like $400,000 at that time. That has grown with CPI from the late 90s to now, where we can borrow in chunks of 1.3 million dollars or multiples of, over X amount of years, depending on how much debt we want to assume and how much debt we can pay off, without going to voter approval. In the late 90s, LFHS had zero debt on the duplicate. So they were not afforded this funding mechanism that were afforded if you had debt. Some districts, I'm told, in the late 90s, when this change in law happened, assumed as much debt as possible in that timeframe to capitalize on this funding structure. Stevenson did that. So they made a decision that they wanted to get as much debt as possible in that window, so then they would have to not go to the voters. And it's, it's proved very financially wise for them if the community supports that type of funding, funding model. Anybody who didn't have debt on the duplicate and wants to create a DECEB has to go to the voters to ask if they would support that type of funding model. In, when I came here, I learned, they didn't have this in Ohio, by the way, so this was new to me. I said, well, let's bring the number down lower. So instead of asking 105, let's ask for 50. And then let's do a DECEB where we'll never have to go in 115 to ask for the voters for money again, if you structure this appropriately. So we did a research-based community poll that was statistically valid. And this community or these communities, because remember we're doing Lake Bluff, Knollwood, and Lake Forest, unilaterally oppose a DECEB. So if I put, if I had put that on the ballot immediately following, because remember there's a shelf life of these, these stats, they would support it at under 40%. So I don't think the community is interested in, and some people say it's like giving the districts a blank checkbook without getting voter approval for a major investment year over year. Right, wrong, or indifferent, when I market tested it, it didn't fly. So one, back to your original question, this all kind of plays together in the complexity. 115 never had that borrowing capacity that they could just borrow year over year without going to the voters. We did do short-term borrows, like the one we just did last week, or last year, of 15 million dollars, and just paying that out of a general fund. They did do capital improvement of 1 to 1.5 million every year. But the way it was presented to me was the 2006 referendum was a referendum that was to last a generation of kids. And then in 15 to 20 years, we would go back to the voters and see if they would support the next generation of kids as opposed to a DECEB or paying it out of short-term borrow, borrows that would impact the programming. Simultaneously, previous boards and community had a demand to build out our programming, so we were competitive with Nutria and Stevenson with what we could offer with only 1,400 kids. And they achieved that mark. It was a calculated decision to invest in programs for our kids, because we could offer less programs year over year, and we could sit on a, a great deal of money and then put this out if you wanted to structure it that way. Previous boards didn't want to do that. They wanted to invest in the kids and there wasn't a DECEB that they could pull from. So there's not one clear answer of why we're here. It's a multitude of variables, but nothing was done by luck and nothing was done in an uncalculated way. And the fact that we didn't have debt on the duplicate in the late 90s is something I celebrate. I think that's demonstrating fiscal responsibility. Unfortunately, long-term funding models, it's negatively impacted because of the way the law was written then.
Well, that's a very complete answer.
I felt like I was just defending a dissertation.
And a complex answer, but it's an important question, I think, when you're going forward.
It's very hard for me to put that in a blurb, Meli.
Sure is.
In FAQ, it's hard.
Was that 2006 referendum, was that like 23 million or something?
55.
55.
52, 55? 54.
54.
54.
Well, you're a million on.
And somebody asked me, what would that be in today's dollars? So we did the inflation run. It's about 80 million dollars in today's dollars. So people are wondering, oh my gosh, 55 million dollars in 2006 and now you're 105. Well, remember that an awful lot of inflation has happened in that time. It is more than the 80 million, but I would argue it's, it's a smaller difference than a full additional 50 million.
Well, thank you very much for your answer. And if there's a way to put that in a blurb in your, on your website.
Mrs. Oakley is, is charged with it.
Because that's a question that I've been asked by a number of people is, is, you know, why weren't they doing these improvements all along? Is the basic question.
After doing this job, or having the pleasure of doing this job for a decade now, I can reassure you that after an exegesis of that budget, this was not fiscal mismanagement. This was, how do we want to invest in kids? And I'm proud that they made those decisions because the community is benefiting every day with what the kids are experiencing when they walk through that building.
Great answer.
There's your blurb.
Yeah, yeah, there's your blurb. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is all recorded, you can go back and watch it on YouTube and you'll get the exact quote. Other questions or comments? Well, I'd like to just bring up a, a point that doesn't get talked about very much, but we, we, we are fond of talking about how our tax rates are the lowest of anybody anywhere around here. And I know we, as a city, take a great deal of credit for that and, and it's an important thing that we keep thinking about. The truth of the matter is, the city is, what, 20% of the tax bill? And the schools are half? So we owe a very large amount of gratitude to the schools for keeping those tax rates low. And I think, I think that's, when people say, oh, they're spending too much money on this or that. I mean, look at the bottom line, look around all of Metro Chicago. We've got some of the best schools anywhere and they're being, they have been run very efficiently from a financial point of view. So, so we appreciate that. You make our job that much easier.
As an aside, Lake Bluff is second behind us, so they would not gain any ground here if the referendum were to move forward.
The other thing I did, I did a rough. I did a rough calculation using the, the calculator, and we'll still have the lowest property taxes around.
And that's what I was going to add, George. With the addition of this referendum, we are still going to be the lowest in Lake County by a lot.
Yeah.
And we are one of the lowest in the state by a lot. And the example I give to folks is, yes, it's an increase, and that is a big ask, and I'm not minimizing that amount. But I am asking, if you pull back and look at the context from maybe a 10,000 or 20,000, if you grab that 1.3 million dollar house and you move it to one of our neighbors, let's just pick Highland Park, and I'm not throwing any shade on Highland Park, I love Highland Park, you're going to pay a lot more in taxes. And that's just the reality of how we benefit from having the lowest tax rate in Lake County.
So, well, thank you very much for that explanation. And I think you've, certainly for us, answered a lot of questions that, as Alderman Rummel said, are being asked of us. And I think, good idea maybe to go back and grab some of those quotes.
Thank you all very much.
So thank you very much, well done.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you have any questions, feel free to send them through Dana to Melissa, and we'll make sure, or reach out to me directly and I'll help. Thank you again for your time. Thank you again for your time.
Thanks again, Matt and Mr. Mayor. That concludes my report for this evening.
Okay. Next item on our list is opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. I've got two people who have expressed interest in speaking. If you please come up to the podium when I call you, introduce yourself, give us your address, and then please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The first person on the list here is Ari Mark. Yeah, if you keep that right in front of your mouth, that'll be best.
My name, good evening. My name is Ari Mark. I'm 11 years old. I'm here today to talk about the closing of the Wildlife Discovery Center. I understand that decisions have already been made, but I hope that what I say tonight may help you see, see those decisions in a new way. I started going to the WDC when I was a little kid. I would watch Boris the Bobcat, Curly the Bread Tailed Hawk, and Flor the Iguana for hours. I would ask the volunteers all kinds of questions about each of the animals. They would tell me stories about how these animals were rescued after being hit by cars or after losing their parents. The volunteers would also tell me about where each animal came from, about their natural habitats, and about how to care for them. Each time I went to the WDC, I would learn something new and my passion for animals grew. I thought to myself that someday I will be a real volunteer here caring for these animals I came to know by name and love and to pass on what I know to the next generation. I've been there for Wildlife Explorers Camp on hot summer days. I've been there to listen to owls and roast marshmallows on the coldest winter nights. The Wildlife Discovery Center has played a big part in who I am today. I know there are hundreds, even thousands of kids who feel the same way as I do. In times when I felt sad or lonely, I knew I could always come to the WDC and caring for the animals for a few hours would cheer me up. But even if you don't love animals as much as I do, I think that the WDC is a special place for everyone. Just because Rob, Mr. Carmichael, is retiring, I can't understand why the city couldn't come up with a plan for the WDC to continue. Even at my age, I know that money has a lot to do with how decisions are made. But people in Lake Forest have more money than most people in most cities. If everyone gave just a little bit, or if the city looked for a few supporters who loved and appreciated the WDC like I do, I know we can keep it going. I myself gave over my allowance time and time again because I believed in what this organization was doing. Finally, I just want to say that it was really upsetting to find out about the closing after the decision was made and after some animals had already been moved out. I'm asking you to see if there's any way you'd reconsider so that this important community resource, this place of loving and learning can be saved. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very well done. The next person I have on the list is Sharon Mark.
I was more signing up, just in case Ari ran out of time. I've been through this before. So as Ari said, we, we moved up to the North Shore about 10 years ago. A friend of ours told us about the Wildlife Discovery Center and we've been going there since Ari was two years old. I got the email from Rob, I think it was last Friday night or the week before. There was a lot of tears in our house. I know the community is really upset. I know that the extended community is really upset. And as Ari said, you know, I think the decision's already been made and I just wanted to share my disappointment. And I think it was a very short-sighted decision that the, you know, I think everyone around here is gonna end up regretting. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a very difficult decision. And I think if you would like to talk to our staff about that, they've, there are people who, you know, any number of people through the city manager would be happy to explain. We've had, we've had a number of people express that opinion, you know, that, that feeling. And we've had lengthy conversations with them and the staff. And I think everybody comes away sort of recognizing the reality of the situation as opposed to, you know, it was not, it was not a hasty decision. It was not a, it was not a comfortable decision. So, okay. Any other members of the public that would like to address the city council? Thank you for your input and Ari, that was a masterful job. Next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are six tonight. First is an approval of January 17th, 2023 city council meeting minutes. Second is approval of the check register for the period, January 1 to January 27th, 2023. Third is approval of a Public Works Committee recommendation of an award of bid to Scandroli Construction for Forest Park Beach Crane Replacement Project in the amount of $427,604 to include a 5% contingency in the amount of $21,380 for the grand total amount of $448,984 and the advancement of fiscal year 2024 funding in the amount of $240,000. Fourth is award of purchase for the replacement of an aerial bucket truck for the forestry section included in the fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025 capital equipment budget to the Sourcewell Cooperatives low bidder, Terex Utilities, Inc., in the amount of Fifth is award of, to Vermeer Midwest, an additional $30,200 to complete the purchase for the replacement of a log chipper for the forestry department for the revised total amount of $214,178. And sixth is approval of a change order to the agreement with MAG Construction to provide the concrete foundation for the monument, donor board, and flagpole for the Veterans Park Improvement Project in the amount of $33,406. Is there any item here that any of the members of the council would like to have taken separately or removed from the list? Okay. I for one, I'm delighted to hear about the cranes finally getting replaced.
I thought about you when I saw that.
It's, it's been soared over all our, all our sailors' heads for the last two or three years. So down to one crane and when that one doesn't work, nobody can use their boats.
I'll convert you to kayaking, you don't need the crane.
So I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Peshlak?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight aces, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is old business. Deerpath Park Athletic Improvements Programming Overview and Revenue Projections. This will be presented by Anthony Anassowicz, Program Manager, and Elizabeth Hohl, Finance Director. And we'll have a little opportunity for a public comment once, once the presentation and discussion are, are done.
And I'll, I'll just jump in real quick to remind the council that we're, you know, as I said in the email this morning, continuing our presentations regarding athletic field improvements in anticipation of potentially reviewing construction bids at the next council meeting. Those bids have been received, we're reviewing them, so we don't have all the information yet, but should have those shortly. Just to tee up for a minute, tonight's presentation, really it is intended to review at a, at a high level, some of the key findings of the Johnson Consulting Report, both on existing programming demand in the community, but also about some of the opportunities we have for programming absorption at Deerpath Park and how that will impact some of the other neighborhood parks that have been utilized lately for competitive athletic activity. So that's the first half of the presentation. Second half, again, is focused on revenue analysis, to be clear. Staff's not looking for the city council to establish specific rental rates. We're really just looking for the council to have a high-level philosophical discussion that can provide direction to the park board, who would then get a little deeper in the weeds in thinking through a specific rate structure that they would then recommend to the council and would come back in the future. So this is, I think, the sixth time that we've discussed this project since we received the park board recommendation last March. This is probably the last sort of informal or informational presentation from staff before we begin the, the more in-depth financial conversation about funding. But as always, you know, while, while staff is confident that the, the level of research that's been done and the recommendations brought forth by the Citizens Advisory Group does address the concerns and priorities we've heard from the council, if the council collectively is interested in, in staff conducting more research before advancing to financial conversations, then we'll happily look for the council to provide that direction. So with that, I'll turn it over to Anthony.
Thank you, City Manager Wishe. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for having me tonight. Can everybody understand me? I know the mask is on. So just a friendly reminder, this is the project timeline. And as you can see, upcoming city council meetings will cover the costs and menu of options as well as consideration of awarding the construction bid. Tonight, Finance Director Hohl and I will provide an update on the programming and revenue analysis that has been conducted. We are here this evening representing a team of city staff who have spent countless hours and met countless times to get where we're at today. The Programming Focus Group was formed in June of 2022 and was set to achieve the goals listed on the next slide. This group, along with any other city staff member involved in this project, have been set out to ensure that Deerpath Community Park remain a community park through this process and not become an athletic complex as recommended by the City Manager Advisory Group. All staff and volunteers that have been involved with this project and each member of this programming team deserves recognition for their dedication and contributions to the project. Kudos to the entire group and subordinate staff that have also assisted on the way. Moving forward, I'd like to discuss the goals that the Programming Focus Group have used to guide their work. To accomplish these goals, a professional consulting firm, Johnson Consulting was hired to assist staff. Number one, compile program data from all outdoor Lake Forest Recreation Apartment, Deerpath Middle School, and local athletic, athletic organizations, including estimated field usage hours throughout Lake Forest. Number two, establish a potential and conservative program schedule at the new Deerpath Community Park. Number three, identify a conservative five-field configuration at the new Deerpath Community Park to help project potential seasonal athletic field usage and revenue scenarios. I will go into detail on the next slide regarding what types of fields are in this five-field configuration, describe the different field types, and what sports or activities may, may use those different types of fields. Number four, look for creative ways to decrease athletic program usage at other Lake Forest neighborhood and community parks. Number five, determine estimated program hours that could potentially be absorbed to Deerpath from Lake Forest Parks. Number six, evaluate the current maintenance-driven athletic field usage policy and address the need to convert the philosophy to a rental-driven policy that would cover maintenance costs as well as generate revenue. And number seven, evaluate potential revenue scenarios. This slide provides definitions to help build a foundation of terminology and information as we move into discussion of other pertinent items. Neighborhood parks seek to achieve a balance between active and passive park uses. Except for limited use by youth teams, neighborhood parks are not intended to be used for program activities that result in overuse, noise, parking problems, and congestion. Community parks are developed for both active and passive uses. Active recreation facilities are intended to be used in a formal and structured manner, reserved, and programmed. These parks built with the intention of being utilized for organized athletics and for public and light recreational activities. So to briefly describe the table on the right, we've classified the different types of fields into rectangles and diamonds. The sports and activities you see on the slide there are categorized by the field type that they use. For example, football being a rectangle sport clearly is played on rectangle type of field. Baseball and softball on a diamond. What we decided to categorize, how we categorized the Lake Forest Summer Camps, Lake Forest Recreation Department Summer Camps, is basically thinking that a camp would take up a rectangle's size worth of space. It's also important to note, too, that different age levels will use different sizes of rectangles. A high school football field is clearly a lot bigger than a flag football field. So we also had the same mindset when it came to Deerpath Middle School activities. A wellness class may use a rectangle size of a space. Field hockey, clearly a rectangle sport. Deerpath Middle School Soccer, clearly a rectangle sport as well. And the track and cross-country could use up to two different sizes of rectangle space. Again, categorizing in the rectangle bucket versus the diamond bucket. And then obviously, baseball and softball are played on those diamonds. We also listed the different seasons each one of those activities has played. Next, I'd like to highlight some of the Johnson Report key findings. Number one, Lake Forest has an above-average population under the age of 25 compared to the national average. Number two, the 9.5 acre footprint allows for new programming opportunities to be added and program absorption from other Lake Forest Parks. Number three, the potential of Deerpath absorbing some existing programming hours from other parks is projected to reduce maintenance costs. Lastly, the potential revenues described in the report findings are very conservative. This slide highlights the programming and maintenance-related benefits associated with the, with building a 9.5 acre footprint at Deerpath Community Park. The Johnson Report had concluded that the smaller footprint would not allow for program absorption from other Lake Forest Parks. By moving program hours to Deerpath, we will, we will return some neighborhood parks to their natural state. As we discussed earlier, neighborhood parks are not designed for excessive organized athletic activity and the intent is to relieve some of that existing usage in the future. By moving some existing programming hours to Deerpath, staff are projecting a reduction in maintenance costs. Moving program hours to Deerpath will also reduce weather-related program cancellations. Furthermore, some canceled events at other parks throughout an athletic season will be moved and conducted daily at Deerpath as schedules permit. Currently, Deerpath Community Park hosts the most diverse athletic programming in Lake Forest. This can be maintained while also absorbing program hours and play host to more new programming opportunities for the community. Lastly, the typical playing season for any Lake Forest Park currently is April through October, as shown by the green and white shaded boxes. Weather-dependent, parks could be utilized for a play of couple, play for a couple weeks in March and potentially November. That's hit or miss, as we all know, in our, our climate. At the new Deerpath Park, the playing season will be expanded to March through November with very minimal issue. As noted on the graphic, February and December could also potentially be a month of play, weather-dependent. I was having a conversation with the director of the Girls Across Organization today and they're already playing on the Lake Forest College turf. They cleared the snow from, from that storm it got last week and they're already out This table shows the different Lake Forest Parks and the current number of, of athletic fields in those parks. The table also includes the classifications of neighborhood versus community parks that we spoke about earlier. As you can see, the projected additional capacity fields at Deerpath would result in reduced activity at neighborhood parks, including Waveland Park and West Park. As discussed previously, when Deerpath has capacity to absorb additional activity, it will allow for some neighborhood parks to return their, return to their intended use by their neighbors. As summarized in the Johnson Report, staff anticipates a significant amount of current programming could be absorbed to Deerpath from other city parks. This slide shows the increase in program hours that Deerpath can absorb in the spring and fall seasons. Utilization is relatively low in all the parks in the summer, presenting the greatest opportunity for new programming and rentals. In the spring season, usage could increase by roughly 100%. In the fall, it could increase by roughly 70%. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Finance Director Hohl to talk about the revenue
Thank you, Anthony, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Anthony mentioned, I'll now move away from the programming a bit and talk a little bit- bit about how that programming work yielded some of the revenue analysis that staff has done and the revenue analysis that was included in the Johnson Report. So when we look specifically at the programming revenue analysis, we had a few specific goals and processes that staff went through. First is to analyze the current revenue structure. So we'll talk about it a couple times through these slides, but field usage and field rentals have been maintenance-driven through 2022. And so there was not really a need for programming staff to understand the time that was being spent and the number of fields that were being used. A program would simply pay for a week's usage at a park and and didn't need to track the time. So the programming staff had to do a significant amount of work to kind of develop what those hours of usage were and be able to understand how that would influence a shift in a fee structure to an hourly rental structure. So once that, the current revenue structure and the maintenance-driven policy work was completed, we then used that data that was developed to project revenues using an hourly rental rate structure at various rates, and we'll go through that in the slide presentation. After that, we then looked at projected impact on current programming fees. It was important for us to understand how current Lake Forest athletic organizations and current recreation programming would be impacted by a shift from a maintenance-driven fee structure to an hourly rental rate structure. And then finally, in the last step, we forecasted incremental revenues that could be generated from new programming or new rentals in the available hours at the parks. As we did our work, we developed some key assumptions that I think it's important for the City Council to understand. First, a significant and detailed analysis was done by Parks Maintenance Staff on maintenance costs, what maintenance hours look like today in Lake Forest Parks, and what it would look like with Deerpath Park and athletic improvements to a synthetic turf field. And so that maintenance analysis was able to allow us a determination that maintenance costs are projected to go down instead of going up with the Deerpath improvements. So that was a very key assumption that that went into our findings. Next is looking at the current revenue and expenses. So in, on page 17 of the Johnson Report, you saw five years of historical data on revenues that are being generated from recreation programming at the athletic fields. And so what, one assumption that we went into is that, to the extent recreation programming revenue today covers maintenance costs, we were going to leave that status quo, with the understanding that maintenance costs would be less under the improved, with the improvements at Deerpath Park. We did not need to worry about generating additional revenue just to fund maintenance, the hours and the staff time to maintain the fields. And so we, we made the assumption that we would leave that status quo and not worry about generating additional revenue to offset maintenance costs. The third significant assumption was the operating hours and schedule at the parks. So based on our analysis, we ended up using 40 hours per week at Deerpath Park and 30 hours per week at every other park. It's important to know the schedule that we use because I think it's another indication of the conservative approach we took at the analysis. So regardless of the season, spring, summer, fall, we only programmed hours after 4:00 PM Monday through Friday. So we did 4:00 to 7:00 at all other parks, 4:00 to 9:00 at Deerpath Park because of the lights. So we extended two operational hours during the week. At all parks, we used nine hours on Saturday and six hours on Sunday. We recognized that we could program fields at other times, but based on the analysis, that was the assumption the programming team opted to use in developing the revenue analysis. And finally, the field configuration and layout. It's very clear that the nine-and-a-half-acre format at Deerpath Park lends itself to multiple configurations and layouts. You've seen a four-diamond configuration. You've seen a 12-soccer field for youngsters configuration. But based on the current programming, both what occurs at Deerpath Park currently and what we thought might be absorbed at Deerpath Park, the programming team felt that the five-field layout would be the most common, and we would use that for our revenue analysis. We recognized that if it was four diamonds, the revenue would be different. If it was six rectangles or 12 rectangles, it would be different. But based on the programming analysis, we felt that two diamonds and three rectangles for the format in doing the revenue projections would be the most appropriate. So once we had those assumptions built into our analysis, we looked then at the replacement cost at 10 years. So this information will look familiar. You saw this at the turf presentation on January 17th. These are the elements of the synthetic turf that would need to be replaced. You've got the different product types, the current recommended product, the replacement period here. We opted to use the warranty periods. We recognized that the estimated useful life may be extended with, beyond the warranty period. We may get 12 to 15 years out of it. But again, using conservative projections, we opted to use a replacement period of 10 years, which is the warranty period for the three elements that would need to be replaced most immediately. You see for the turf pile, infill, and then removal shipping to recycling facility what the estimated replacement cost is in today's dollars. For a total of $2,756,000, we elected to use a 3% inflation factor, which would mean that at the 10-year mark, the city would need to have $3.6 million in order to do the replacement at the 10-year mark. We could generate less than that per year if we extended the useful life, but we opted to use these numbers and the warranty periods, being conservative, which would then roughly indicate that the city would need to put $360,000 aside per year to generate enough and accumulate enough funding to to fund the replacement at the 10-year mark. This is a really busy slide, so we're going to spend a little bit of time on it. And this really gets to the analysis that we did, looking at the impact of current programming within the city parks. So in the green, you have the five Lake Forest athletic organizations that currently have practices and games in Lake Forest Parks. You've got the organization, the sport played. And then in this dark green band right here, what you have are the fees that that organization paid to the city in 2022 on the maintenance-based revenue structure. So it's important to note here that these are only amounts being paid to the city. We understand that these organizations may have to rent fields outside the city, and we did not try to estimate or project those revenues as part of our analysis. So this is simply the revenue that they paid to the city of Lake Forest in 2022 on the maintenance-based fee structure. The line underneath that is the result of the analysis that the programming team did in developing the hours of practices and games of that organization in 2022 for their seasons. What you find interesting here is that, for example, you have LFSA and LFLA paying nearly the same amount on a maintenance-based structure, but using the fields for a significantly different number of hours. And you see that come through when we convert then to the hourly rental fee structure. So hours used in 2022. And then we've got for you, we did many, many scenarios of these. I've just included, for purposes of the presentation, for hourly rental rates, $20 per hour, $30 per hour, $50 per hour, and $100 per hour. I would note that 20 and 30 were the rates that were used in the Johnson Consulting Report, but once we had this data, it was very easy to estimate these at multiple different hourly rate structures. And then what you see at that hourly rental rate, what those fees would have been at that hourly rate structure based on the hours that they used the fields in 2022, can easily compare the difference to the maintenance-based fee structure. And then to this right, this total column, it just sums the total of the five organizations. So I would simply note, too, just for understanding, if at a $20 per hour rental rate structure, that would generate about $69,000. We were already receiving $61,000. So we see that as only $8,000 in incremental revenue because the $61,000 is already built into the city's budget. So we were looking at the difference between the $61,000 and what the hourly rate structure would generate. Conversely, we did, we took a different approach on the recreation program fees. So these are per-participant registration fees through Lake Forest Recreation Programming. It does not lend itself well to an hourly rental rate structure. So what we did instead on this side was to say what revenue would be generated, what incremental revenue would be generated by an increase in the registration fee for a participant. Very simple analysis. We had a total of 1,018 participants in recreation programs using athletic fields in 2022. So we could simply look very easily at a $10, $20, $30, $40 increase in the registration fee per participant and determine what that would generate in incremental revenue. So on this side, these amounts would all be new revenue. So this would be the incremental revenue amount, a little differently than comparing these numbers with the base of $61,000. So this generated for us kind of a revenue comparison of what the additional incremental revenue would be generated just on current programming. So current recreation programming, current Lake Forest athletic organizations using Lake Forest athletic fields. We then also looked at what the potential for additional rental revenues would be. So once we've accommodated the Lake Forest athletic organizations and all the current programming, we have available hours to rent athletic fields at Deerpath Park, but also at other athletic fields in the city. We looked specifically at Deerpath Park in this analysis. And this is actually the final schedule that was in the Johnson Consulting Report, page 28. We just summarized it a little bit, just for graphical purposes on the slide, to give you, you know, the basic, important information here. So we have by season, spring, summer, and fall, the additional program hours available. So how this number is derived is by taking the total available programming hours, which was a five-field layout, two diamonds, three rectangles, times a 12-week season, times the 40 hours per week that we had for programming at Deerpath Park. That was a total of 2,400 available hours for each season, and we subtracted from that both the current programming hours at Deerpath Park and the hours on Anthony's previous slide that we were estimating we could pull over from other parks into Deerpath Park. So you saw the current programming and the absorbed programming hours. We took those out, and this is the net amount by season. So you see, we've got spring and fall pretty well utilized, not a lot of available programming hours, but as Anthony indicated in his presentation, the summer season across Lake Forest is a time when it's low utilization for athletic fields, and certainly, the summer season would lend itself for having a lot of available programming hours should the city want to do so going forward. So that's how we got additional program hours available by season, and then we took that and we looked at the 20- and 30-hour per rate, and we also looked at a Tier 2 rental rate. So in Johnson Consulting's report, they talk a little bit about outdoor, outside programming, if the city wanted to offer that, especially in the summer with the available hours, what might that look like? We were very conservative. The programming team opted to use 90% of available hours for local programming and only 10% of the available hours. So 23 hours in the spring, 208 hours in the summer, 51 hours in the fall, being the amount of hours that might be available for Tier 2 rentals. And then you can see in each season what additional revenue might be generated under the 20, 30, and 100 hours, and then the subtotal at 20 and 30, $50,886, $76,329. And then at the 10% Tier 2 rentals, generating an estimated $25,443 for a year. So what that came down to was a total additional potential revenue range of $76,000 at the $20 per hour assumption and 100 and just short of $102,000 at the $30 per hour. And these were really just intended to give you an idea of what might be generated at different levels. So finally, we did some research, thanks to the recreation group, looked at comparable synthetic field rental rates in other communities. We updated all of this, updated as recently as this morning. And what we did was, what you see here is only synthetic fields. So I think an important point is that the park board will, in analyzing the usage policy and a fee structure, will need to consider, you know, whether the rate will be the same for natural fields and synthetic fields, or whether they'll be different. But for this comparison, we're just giving you the range of rental rates currently being charged in these communities. The orange bar for each is the minimum rate charged. The gray is maximum, and some of those were resident, non-resident. Some of those were different fields, and so there were different variations in what communities charged as a minimum, maximum. And then in the really dark orange, for some of these, they, this is the additional charge they're assessing per hour if you have lights. So they have a rate structure, and then if you want an evening and you use lights, then there's an additional add-on rate to that. So you would tack that on to the top of these. One thing to note, I think, is, you know, we've given you examples of $20 and $30 per hour. So if you kind of take an imaginary line across here at 30, there isn't a single entity on the chart charging a rate below $40. $40 is the lowest rate charged in Vernon Hills per hour. So 20 and 30, as noted in the presentation, and by Johnson Consulting, they felt was a very conservative rate to be using for prospective revenue analysis. But conservative projections serve us well in Lake Forest, and we like to do that, and so we wanted to carry that that through to this. But certainly, this gives you a real eye to what, you know, the potential is for additional revenue, and that the numbers on the previous slides are are indeed probably conservative. So no one is at 30, no one is at 20. Lowest rate, again, is Vernon Hills at $40 per hour. So in conclusion, just to summarize, I think Anthony did a good job of kind of differentiating neighborhood parks from community parks in Lake Forest, and the reasons why it benefits Lake Forest to transition some of that programming from neighborhood parks to community parks, and Deerpath would have the capacity to take on significant programming in spring and fall, relieving those neighborhood parks, reducing maintenance costs. Natural fields are challenging and time-consuming to maintain, and so transitioning that to Deerpath Park would overall reduce maintenance costs for Lake Forest Parks and athletic fields. And again, just an eye to having really focused on using conservative revenue projections in our analysis as part of this work. in our analysis as part of this work. So, as City Manager Wishe indicated at the beginning, what we're really looking for this evening is some direction from the City Council to provide to the park board. One, to what extent would the City Council like additional revenue to offset future maintenance and replacement of turf fields so that roughly $360,000 per year? In our discussions and review, staff recommended a fee structure, we thought it was important to give the park board a range. Staff was recommending a fee structure that will generate 50 to 80% of the amount needed annually to fund future maintenance replacement of turf fields. That would be $180,000 to just under $290,000 per year. We would certainly see in the early years the activity and the demand and be able to adjust that going forward, but at least initially, we felt that was a good range to be at. The next step would be to provide that direction and feedback to the park board so that the park board can really get into the detailed analysis of modifying the athletic field usage policy and developing a specific fee structure to bring back and recommend to the City Council for your consideration. So, at this point, Anthony and I and the whole team are here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Question from Alderman Novit.
This is my first opportunity as a City Councilperson to ask any questions about this project, so I, I'm sorry.
So, I'm going to kind of be all over the place, and I apologize for that.
That's right, and we'll go back and forth depending.
Okay, good, all right. Regarding the money, so these organizations are already paying in towards the, what I presume is put towards the maintenance of these natural grass fields that they're playing on now.
That's correct.
So, when you increase that hourly rate, those fees are going to have to be paid by these organizations. So, I presume the families paying these participation fees are going to have to pay more money for their children to participate in these programs?
Presumably, yes. We have not had the detailed discussions with the athletic organizations on their rate structure. And again, we also don't know what they're paying outside of Lake Forest for field usage. So, we don't know what their total budget is for field rental fees.
But that's just something I think we need to consider because if it's going to come down to be, to be an added expense for your child to participate in these programs, something to consider.
And I can just add to that because I have at least anecdotally had conversations with several board members of some of the private leagues, and I think they understand that given the price tag associated with this project, that the council is likely to want to recoup some of the future costs, replacement costs, ongoing maintenance costs. At least from what I've heard in conversations, I think the trade-off of having predictable fields that can be utilized versus now enduring regular cancellations is something that, that most of them are very comfortable with.
Okay. I just don't want to lose sight of it, that's all. You talked about the saving a lot of maintenance money. I'm not sure what the maintenance is for natural grass versus turf. Is there someone that can help me with that?
It is. So, this is Parks Supervisor Rich Paulson.
Thanks, Rich.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. Some of the savings will be kind of, kind of twofold. I'll start with the savings that'll be at Deer Path Park. There'll be a lot of underlying maintenance fees that we won't need to be doing there anymore. We won't be cutting the grass twice a week. The irrigation field will be not needed. There'll be no irrigation there. Also, painting and lining of the fields, when we put it down on the artificial turf, it can last upwards to eight weeks, where if it's in the grass fields, every week we have to paint those fields. So, those are some of the savings that we're going to be saving at that park. Now, the other neighborhood parks, because we're not going to be overusing them, like Anthony and Elizabeth stated, we will be able to save quite a bit of money there too also. We'll be going down to a once-a-week mowing instead of twice a week to keep the turf short enough for what they like when they're playing. And then a lot of the restoration. Because all of our fields are overused, we have such a small gap to restore those fields. So, we have to get in there and try to get them all restored because they do get damaged quite a bit in the spring, and that's something that won't be happening anymore.
To follow up on that, you said you'd have to paint the turf every eight month, every eight weeks?
Six to eight weeks is what they predict.
So, if you're, if you're going into this with an expected configuration of two diamonds and three rectangles?
Correct.
What do the three rectangles accommodate? Because on the charts that we got from Johnson, they didn't look to be regulation. I can't figure out what sports you play on those three rectangles.
Well, there is multiple different configurations that we can put out there. We can put two full-size football fields, multiple soccer fields from 10U all the way up to the 14U. It'll really depending on what I'm painting as to what Anthony's programming. This weekend, he may say that I need 12 U-10 fields. We'll paint those.
So, then how often are you going to paint them? I mean, are you going to schedule a season at a time, so you're only doing the diamonds in the summer and you're not dealing with it? I don't understand, I don't understand how you're going to schedule this.
The diamonds will be painted from the permanent line. So, those ones, we won't be painting at all. The only ones that we will be painting are what he schedules for a six-week program and an eight-week program in the fall.
So, the calendar will be driven by permanently, you know, marking the field for the extended time of that particular sport?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, it makes sense. That's, I just wanted to understand it.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I have, I have a couple more. Absorbing all the programming into Deer Path Park, and I think this is probably for Anthony then. So, I know that at Everett Field, there's baseball diamonds that kids play, and there's cameras there, and you can watch it on the, on the Lake Forest Now app, is that right? You can watch your kids play, but if you're not there, you can. Are all of those amenities going to be taken out of Everett Park then, and there will be no more baseball through the park center, through the rec center at Everett Park?
The diamonds around town, so the baseball diamonds at Everett, as you bring up, will stay there. In fact, the rectangle field that we currently have at Everett, the soccer field, will stay there too. We were just talking about removing some rectangles from Waveland and West Park and Town Line Park at this moment. That could change. Every year, the fields take on different abuse, and we close fields every once in a while, and we do a lot of shifting because, as Rich mentioned, everything is so overprogrammed right now. Giving.
Go ahead.
With a larger footprint, where we can absorb a lot of those hours from the exterior parks and give those parks more opportunity to rest and recover, not being overprogrammed.
But, but for the.
Helpful if you want to pull up the slide that showed the field inventory.
Yeah, I saw South Park and Everett, we're going to be staying pretty static.
I think there's a misconception that discussion of absorption would mean moving all activity to Deer Path Park. That's not the case at all. It's a partial absorption.
Okay, but then to finish my thought, if you're build, if you, if you're advocating for this or for doing this turf field so that there's no cancellations in these natural grass fields? But you're still playing at Everett and South Park, does that mean then if Everett or South Park, if we have rain, that the games that are scheduled for Everett or South Park will move over?
We will have the opportunity to move some of those games and events over to Deer Path. 100% of them, I don't know. Until that day actually comes up.
What about the parents who don't want their kids to play on turf, who want a natural grass option?
Then that would be up to the organization to handle internally, I would think, that they could stay at those natural parks with those teams.
Okay, if there's enough kids, if there's enough kids to field those teams?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Moving on, I saw in the chart that DPM, as their wellness classes are all going to be on the turf?
Yes.
Does DPM, does the school district pay the park district to use the space?
Not currently.
To use the field? Is that added, is that something that's going to be contemplated?
I think it's a discussion to have further.
I'll say we've had conversations with the school district. We do enjoy reciprocity in use of facilities, and so we've had conversations not about charging an hourly or seasonal fee to the school district, recognizing that they're taxpayers, the taxpayer funded as well, but also taking this opportunity to enhance some of the reciprocity in use of the gymnasiums at some of their schools. And so, we think there's real opportunities to benefit our internal programming from that.
Okay, then my next question along those lines is, so all the sports are going to have their practices on these fields as well after school? The DPM teams?
Yes.
Again, it's back to parents who don't want their kids on turf.
So, the school does have the field to the northeast. There's a smaller area that's typically used for field hockey, even girls lacrosse back in the day, but more so field hockey now. So, there will still be some natural space if they'd like to use that versus.
But only if they're participating in the programs that are spaced, that are sited there, right?
Well, that's just a school. School uses that space for their activities.
But if, but if this is an after-school team, if this is a team, and you want to play field hockey at DPM, and the DPM field hockey team is practicing on the turf, then that's it.
It's up to the coaches and their program.
Yeah, I understand.
They want to go turf or natural. Options there.
Okay, all right. Finally, in the Johnson Report, they talked about having fireworks at Deer Path Community Park. I think we know that's not. But what I, what I learned when I went and visited, the public, those guys could not have been kinder. They sat with me because I wasn't here on the 17th. They let me look at the sample of the turf. They let me walk on it. We showed the drainage. They showed me everything. They were great, answered 175 questions at least. Since the turf doesn't support fireworks as a location, am I correct?
That's actually out of my realm a little bit, but.
I can jump in and just say that, you know, irrespective of what the Johnson Report might indicate as possible or feasible, we have no expectation that the fireworks would continue at Deer Path Park. So, I know Parks and Rec staff is working with the Friends Foundation as we speak. They're ultimately the, the hosts and sponsors of that event. We are talking through alternative locations, hope to have something for the council in the near future, but for purposes of these conversations, I think it's fair to assume that the Fourth of July event will need to be relocated.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Steph, thanks so much for this report. It's been really helpful. Just a couple of thoughts. Nancy Alderman Novit brought up the, the usage of DPM on the fields and the reciprocity, and I think it's really important that the city look at the current agreement that's in place to be sure that the line is equal and/or slid down the scale a little bit because the city is making such a great investment for all of the students to use. And as Dr. Montgomery stated, what is this project for? It's for the kids. And while the investments go into different infrastructure, I mean, this is Parks and Rec infrastructure is what I look at this project. Secondly, if, maybe Anthony, you could just comment, that some of the slides looked at new programming opportunities. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? And from my experience, I know the youth flag football program seems to sell out pretty quickly. I've had a son participate the last few years. So, would that mean we would have greater opportunity for more students to be able to play in something like that? Or maybe you could just elaborate on what programming opportunities are there?
Yeah, I think when we say program opportunities, it really means can we expand our portfolio of current programs? You know, there's a little bit of a dip in the adult program offerings we offer. We used to run an adult softball league. We now have opportunity to bring in more adult sports, whether it's soccer, more adult softball, what have you. Thinking outside the box, we can do some other open play, you know, Saturday morning or Saturday afternoon teenager soccer open play. The opportunities are kind of endless, but really it's just adding to the portfolio now of current programming now. With just new ideas to generate more programming opportunities.
I really like kickball. I know Lake Bluff does like a kickball league, so just to note that.
Dodgeball.
One of the other thoughts that I came to mind in hearing some of the comments and just even through this entire process that I feel is really important is that the community has a choice to play on both artificial turf and natural grass, and I think that is what really adds to the robustness of our programs, is that they have a choice. So, I do, I've heard concerns, and I certainly respect the concerns of people who are concerned about artificial turf. However, there is a choice out there. If DPM wrote a letter in support of this project, which I believe their wellness department did, is that, okay, so they wrote a letter in support of this project, and they're going to have all of their kids out there during their daytime activities, gym and.